I'd like to call the meeting to order and advise everyone in attendance that this meeting is being recorded. Is there anyone else recording? There being none, if you join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening again, everyone. We're going to start with special recognitions, and I'm going to actually move down, which it is listed on the superintendent's report, Christopher Keys.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As reported to you at a previous meeting, Christopher Keys was the selection from Auburn Middle School to represent the Auburn Public Schools at the Governor's Project 351 Initiative. And Christopher is here today with his mom. He actually spent time on Saturday down in Boston. They do it around the Martin Luther King holiday. So, Chris, if you're willing to come to the mic and share with us a bit about your day. He was an outstanding representative for the Auburn Public Schools.
Thanks. So, we went to Faneuil Hall, and we got these T-shirts, and we listened to the governor talk to us, and he had a little Q and A so we could kind of figure out about him. And then we got up with our groups, which we would be spending the day with, and we met them. We played a couple of games just to kind of, you know, meet them. And then we all went to our different project groups, like the community service groups. So, five different groups went to schools, and then another one went to Cradles and Carrons. And I went to a school, and we painted, well, we got separated into groups where you could either paint murals, paint walls, or paint the classroom. And I got to paint murals. And while doing that, I met a bunch of new friends. And then after that, we went to the State House, and we had a meeting with the governor. We talked about our day and like what we did and different things. And then we went to dinner. And it was such a fun day, and I would love to do it again. And everybody was just having fun. And I'm still talking to the people that I met there today, like right now. I'm texting them and having fun doing it. And I have some pictures of the things that we have. So, these are some of the murals that we did, and they were hung up in the cafeteria of the school. This picture of everybody that was there. And I'm just in the background of that picture.
One thing Chris was sharing with me before the meeting, and got some correspondence through Mr. Gagnon and the coordinator of this, that you're going to have a reunion-type event at some point?
Yeah, Gillette Stadium. I'm not, they haven't given me too much information on that, but they said it's going to be at Gillette Stadium.
Good. That's great.
Great place to go.
Do any committee members have any questions or comments?
If I may, can you just explain like just a little bit of what, you know, what the governor said to you and what he was trying to inspire and bring out in you guys?
Well, he was just thanking us for being there, and he was just trying to commemorate Martin Luther King because that's what we were there for pretty much, to remember him. And he just told us about how proud he was and how we reminded of him, of himself as he was a kid. And that's when he got into the question and answer.
Do you have any questions for him?
No, I didn't, but.
Terrific.
Well, hopefully, we can share one of these pictures on our website or our Facebook page, district page. I think it's fantastic, and I look forward to hearing when you guys come back and explain to what happened. And I thank the principal for taking the time to come, too. It's a very supportive environment.
How many schools did we win?
351.
Oh, my gosh. So, you have 351 people that you're now talking to. That's fantastic. Really fantastic. Congratulations.
Thank you for sharing that with us. Thank you very much.
Great job, Christopher. Great job.
I'm going to move back to citizens' concerns and comments. Seeing that there are none, we'll move on to our student representatives' report.
All right. Well, we actually have a pretty busy week at the high school. Tomorrow morning, the students, a selected group of students, will be going to Quebec for a brief vacation that they do annually. Also this weekend is the We the People competition, an annual competition in which the AP Government students go and give several speeches to a panel of judges at Harvard University on different aspects of the Constitution. Also recently, the CARE students have been traveling around to the different elementary schools and talking, kind of giving advice to the younger kids there on self-esteem and competence. And I also heard that this coming February, as last year, the Beijing students will once again be coming to Auburn High School.
Very nice. Thank you. Any questions? We can now, well, entertain a motion to accept the regular session minutes, January 8th, 2014.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? The motion carries. I'm going to now go back to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first, and we have Dr. Lozay here with us this evening. If you remember, back in October of 2012, so nearly 18 months or so ago, the Mass Department of Ed came in and did an audit. They did several audits, one of our English Language Learner Program. They also looked at our Civil Rights and Special Education through the Coordinated Program Review. And we've only recently gotten this report back, but just as we found with the others, it was really an exemplary report, which speaks to Dr. Lozay's coordination of this program and training that she provides around it, with only one finding that Dr. Lozay will share with you. So, I'm going to turn it over to her with your permission to give us a brief update.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to give you a little background on the process. Some of you might remember it from last year when Mr. Campbell also reported out on his Coordinated Program Review, which we call CPR. So, to give you some background, last year, as we went through that process, we had to look in the English Language Learning Program at 18 different legal standards that we had to show that we were in compliance with. So, what we had to do initially was compile a lot of evidence and documentation, whether it's policies from school committee, schedules from teachers, handbooks on ELL, and send that to the Department of Ed. That went off in a big box. Then, following that, they came for a site visit to our schools. They spent a day here in the Blue Room. They went to our schools and visited the classrooms. They observed instruction. They interviewed the administrators. They interviewed the teachers. They also interviewed parents. They then looked through student records to see if what we said we were doing was actually evidenced in those records. After all of that, they thoroughly, it took me a year to review all that data. We had so much for them. They finally sent us a report just recently, and of those 18 standards, they found that Auburn was in compliance in implementing, as they term it, 17 of those. There was, however, one area that they rated as partially implemented, and that was in regards to the amount of time that we have scheduled for our students to have direct pull-out English as a second language instruction. We do a lot of in-class support, do a lot of push-in. The department, however, would like to see us doing more pull-out instruction. So, in order to meet that, those hours, they have a document on guidance. So, for example, just to give you some reference point, a beginner, a level-one student who performs at a level-one in terms of their English language proficiency, the department recommends a minimum of two and a half hours of pull-out instruction, up to a full day. There's a big range in there. So, in order to meet some of those, we put together an action plan going forward. And we have till December 14th of 2014 to comply with that. You have a copy of the action plan in your packet. And what we tried to do was to implement this a little bit slowly, because we already have fixed schedules in places, especially at the high school and at the middle school. We are proposing some slight increases for the remainder of this year through some creative scheduling. And then, based on the FY '15 proposed budget, we have added two additional ELL tutors. We feel that we can meet those minimum requirements that Desi puts forth by December 14th. And I want to say here, too, that, you know, we feel like we've grown a great ELL program. We're really proud of it. But we definitely want all 18 standards to be implemented. So, we're hopeful that they'll give us feedback on our plan and approve it. And we'll let you know and update you on that as it comes through to us.
Yes, please.
And I'll answer any questions.
A couple. So, they're looking at that one, you know, the pull-out. So, then, because of that, because it's a partial implementation, do they come back now soon and see if you've done anything? When will they review again to see that you're?
So, if they approve the action plan that we've given them, there are dates in there that we've set that we'll monitor ourselves, which they may ask me to submit some documentation, updated schedules of our teachers and our tutors, maybe logs or lesson plans. They've also been known to do an unannounced site visit. So, we'll have to wait and see where that goes.
Okay. And then, I know you're talking about level-one. Obviously, there's more than just a level-one. But how many level-one students do we have?
Students do we have? Most of our level-one students are at the primary grades, which makes sense, right? And the more they spend time in our classrooms and are immersed with that, their language is acquired more quickly, and that's the model that we've been pursuing. We do actually have at the high school two level-one students who are recent move-ins. They are getting an hour of direct ESL instruction presently, and we will work to increase that.
And so, it seems to me like the challenge is not just, the challenge is what you do, what they've lost for that two and a half-plus hour. So, I mean, that's to me is very challenging.
Right, correct. It is very challenging. And the department recommends, especially with the younger students, that that two and a half hours or more is taken out of their English language block, so that the instructor would also be giving them reading instruction, literacy instruction, vocabulary instruction, which will build their English proficiency. It gets a little trickier at the high school level when you have new students that come in. We do have to take a block of their day, whether it's an elective block, to fill that with an ESL block.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, keep going.
So, I know, if I remember correctly from past presentations that you've given to us, they only have like a year before then they, I mean, so the MCAS, they have to take the MCAS, is it a year that we have before they, that we have before we have to start giving them the MCAS?
Actually, a student that just moves in to our district that are fresh from another country does not have to take the English Language Arts MCAS their first year in the country. However, they do have to take the math MCAS. Yes. It's a challenge. It's a challenge. It is amazing, as we watch the progress of our students, though, how much they grow and how quickly they grow in their language acquisition with their peers in the classroom. A lot of them find TV to be another source of instruction for English. So.
Okay. Thanks. That was my one question.
Well, I think Liz took care of it.
Oh, no, no, that's good. No, because that's what my concern is. If you're pulling them out of one class, how do they catch up with what they've lost? So, I mean, kudos to for 17 out of 18. I absolutely understand, you know, you want to get to that 18, but you know what? I think you guys have done a great job in what, you know, the timeframe that you've had and stuff. And, you know, a partial implementation to a full implementation. I know you'll get there.
Thank you.
And we got faith in you. You'll make the 18.
Thank you.
I also agree. Does she have another piece?
Yes. And then the, I'm actually noticing, it's not, I don't think, in my packet, but I know that it was emailed out, the January 28th Professional Development Update. It's actually a half-day next Tuesday. So, if you have any questions, Dr. Lozay would be happy to answer them. But as always, she's got a wide variety of different menu items taking place that are very specific to people's job responsibilities.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there are no objections, we'll move from the superintendent's report to unfinished business to talk about the joint meeting on January 29th. Is that what you wanted?
That would be great, yes. Mr. Fahy is here for that. So, what we provided for you, Mr. Fahy, Mr. Gray, and I met on numerous occasions to provide for all of you for your review, to see what it is that we'll be sharing at the January 29th, the week from tonight, the joint meeting. So, if I can direct your attention, it starts with the fiscal year 15 capital plan, and then actually goes for several materials together. Ending with the capital plan expanded, spring summer 2014 proposed schedule of work. There are a few other items that are at the end of the packet that I'll draw your attention to momentarily, partially, that are in Mr. Gray's report as well. But what we've done, or what Mr. Fahy and Mr. Gray did, I should, do you want to take over? Do you want me to go through it? How do you want to? So, what we looked at is in FY '15, moving forward, with Julia Bancroft and the Mary D. Stone School, eventually, I would imagine, ultimately not being used as educational facilities, per the recommendation of the master plan team, we looked to see how we could shift monies around. And the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen, I would agree, are interested in seeing where we might not be looking for as much funding in the future. Now, just last week, Mr. Fahy, Mr. Gray, Mr. Kazanovich, and I, including Mr. Rengard from the master plan team, we broke this into a couple of different pieces, went through this actually with them to show what it is that we were transferring. So, if you look on the FY '15 CIP document, and you go down to the Julia Bancroft, what Mr. Fahy has recommended is, because this school will eventually become offline, we looked at only doing any upgrades that would be required regardless of who is responsible, school committee or the town for it. And the oil tank upgrade is something that's in the ground? Yeah.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. The oil tank over at Julia Bancroft, we have two tanks that are currently underground. We switched over to gas two years ago to benefit from a lot of cost savings, actually. So, what we're able to do is, we're actually able to clean the tanks, pump out the existing oil that was in it. So, there's nothing in the tanks right now, however, they're clean, but per code, they have to be removed. So, that's why that's still addressed in our capital for $30,000.
And then what we did, you might as well stay there, Mr. Fahy, we went through and looked to see, and this was actually as part of a discussion with Mr. Kazanovich, was to take any available funding and will seek, this will need town meeting approval in May, but obviously yours first, would seek to transfer available funds to the 10 Swanson Road renovation. So, as you can see from Julia Bancroft and Mary D. Stone, looking to transfer $50,000 each to the 10 Swanson Road renovation. No changes to Packer Chalk and then to the middle school, rather than itemize items out, and again, this was part of a discussion with Mr. Kazanovich, to leave it as a total value for the Swanson Road renovations. And we're actually going to show you in a few sheets what it is we anticipate spending that money on. So, if you see on the second sheet here, in FY '15, it does not actually equate to a reduction in the CIP, because we did replace in there for the one-to-one technology iPad initiative. There needs to be a sum of money that's allotted on an annual basis for that. I don't know if you want, if you have any questions about each individual CIP, or we just kind of give you an overview, and you take them in totality. These are the 15 through the 18 CIPs that we have amendments to. The FY '19, if you recall, you approved back in September, and we had not put any placeholders in for either JV or Mary D.
Will this be posted?
This information will be. So, our plan is that we will bring this forward next week to, with you, but share with the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen, and then we can certainly post it for people to see. Bless you.
Thank you.
But if you look at the FY '16, you see that there is a reduction there. And this also is noted in the superintendent's memo of 140,000. That's a reduction in FY '16. And then FY '17, that amount had initially come in far less than other years, the 725. So, there's no reduction there. But when you go to FY '18, that actually shows as a $324,000 reduction. And if you recall, over the years, what you'll see in the next packet of materials that starts with capital plan expanded?
Excuse me?
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt, but food chair, if I may, just before we move off this document. I'm just curious, under the Julia Bancroft and the Mary D., there's a mention of asbestos. Are we, we're not obligated to have to, you know, remove that asbestos or whatever prior to us turning it over to the town? Anything? We're not obligated to have to do that?
No, we're not. I mean, we keep that $10,000 placement in there for asbestos for any broken pipes throughout the year, any flooring projects that we do. But when we decommission the building, if you will, we don't, we do not have to remove all the asbestos.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you.
The next packet actually shows, so that was the 15 through 19. This actually shows a summary of the proposed funds to be transferred to the 10 Swanson Road renovation project. A question that had been asked, you know, would we be seeking additional funding beyond what had been approved in CIPs or proposed in CIPs? And the master plan team, Mr. Fahy, Mr. Gray, and I have been working very hard to try and stay within those limits, and we're comfortable at this point, but for $200,000, which we discussed with Mr. Kazanovich, that we should be able to do so, which is, I think, pretty impressive. So, what that front sheet shows is the remaining balances. So, this is a summary in the backup files of what we're proposing in each fiscal year, so FY '11 through '14, to transfer to the 10 Swanson Road, ultimately to a total of $1.8 million that we would use on that. And we're going to tie that in to another document a little later. Just to give you a quick key, so on the pages that follow, anything that is noted in red is what Mr. Fahy and Mr. Gray have determined that they'll be working on this summer, spring or summer of '14, I think. Right, Mr. Fahy?
Correct.
Yeah. So, many of these will require procurement. So, the two of them worked to outline the original budget is, what's been completed, the balance, and what's to be done with that balance. I don't know if you have any questions. And anything in blue is to be transferred to 10 Swanson Road.
If I may, through the chair, on page, well, if you count the double sides, one, two, three, four, the fourth page in the red, it says EMS work at Burn Mob. I just, what is EMS work?
Energy Management Systems.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And that could be anything from heat pumps to building automated controls to air conditioning. It's all lumped into one.
Okay. Thank you.
So, they've put a tremendous amount of work into detailing exactly what's been done, what is to be done, and the timeframe as well. With your permission, what I'd like to do is turn over this next part, which is the summary sheet to Mr. Gray regarding the MSBA, the Statement of Interest, the Accelerated Repair Program. There's a summary sheet, and then in the back section, the business financials, there are three, excuse me, four documents right after business and financials that you may want to pull out that Mr. Gray is likely to reference. Go on, Mr. Fahy.
Thank you very much. As Dr. Brunel pointed out, one of the things that many of us have been involved in is trying to identify projects that would fit in with any accelerated repair program that the MSBA is currently asking for invitations to submit a statement of interest. So, in addition to looking at all the different CIP funds throughout various years, we also needed to identify if, in fact, some of those projects came to fruition through the MSBA, where would we find the match money in order to meet that need without having to ask for additional taxpayer support. So, the first document that Dr. Brunel referred to was the MSBA Capital Plan Expanded. And this is basically some rough estimates on three buildings that we identified as needing, and needing the Statement of Interest program with some estimated cost, and where we identified approximately a 50% match through already dedicated CIP funds from previous years. If you have no questions about that, the additional documents that Dr. Brunel referred to, if you look at, there are three documents all entitled Massachusetts School of Building Authority. They look similar, except under the name of the school, you'll find the, this is an exact copy of what I will be submitting, if approved electronically, to the MSBA. These are the questions that the MSBA has asked regarding our interest in provide, are asking for funds to help facilitate some of the repairs of these three buildings. So, the format is the same. Thanks to Mr. Fahy and Dr. Brunel, I was able to research a lot of documents and identify the age of some of the repairs we're asking for and document the needs, so that within these accelerated repair programs, we'd be able to address energy efficiency as well as upgrades to the buildings in those areas of which they're willing to fund. So, these three documents reflect the submission that, if approved by both the school committee and ultimately the town, we would be submitting electronically to the MSBA by the deadline of February 14th. I don't know if anybody has any questions. It's fairly detailed, but at the same time, the MSBA points out the fact that this is not a commitment on anyone's part. This is the, in this case, the school committee and the town, if so desired, would be letting the MSBA know they are interested as involved, by the Statement of Interest. The MSBA has said, you know, don't put a lot of time and effort in this, because we just want to make sure that the criteria of which we've established, that your buildings meet that criteria. And so, while the numbers for some of the projects, Mr. Fahy and I looked at similar projects that have occurred throughout the state in the recent past. And ultimately, I think, as I explained in the last meeting, if invited into the accelerated repair program, the MSBA would then, through their program, employ and own a project manager would come out and refine those numbers, so we know exactly what we're dealing with as far as the total costs of repairs and what numbers might need to be matched by the towns through those CIP funds that we identified. I know it's a lot of information. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but... And then the last information that Dr. Brunel referred to, in order to apply for this accelerated repair program, you'll see this sheet that says required form of vote to submit a Statement of Interest. This is the text of which it has to be read verbatim by both the school committee, and if so approved, then ultimately by the town, if so approved. And so, you'll see three separate resolutions that require the school committee at this point to state to the MSBA that they are providing approval, if so deemed, to, for me to submit to them a Statement of Interest in regards to each of these three individual schools. So, if the school committee so desires, these resolutions should be read verbatim. They're very particular about every single word has to match. And then, once the resolutions are passed, the minutes of the school committee has to be approved before the February 14th deadline. And then they have to be signed off by a district employee who indicates that these are true and attest copies of the minutes, so in fact, they know that both the school committee and the town did approve the resolutions.
Did you want to have us read these tonight?
I would appreciate that. And the Board of Selectmen has asked, they actually are hoping to take a vote on this next Wednesday when we meet jointly, but have asked Mr. Gray and I to attend, I noted in here, Monday's meeting, just to give them an overview, give them these materials so that they can read through them and be prepared to vote on the 29th as well. And that way, when we come back together on February 12th, you'll be able to approve the minutes that will need to go to show that both bodies approve these resolutions.
So, will this be in the form of a motion?
Yes. Someone actually needs to...
So, we actually have to read each one of these?
You do need to read each one. So, it's in the minutes, which you agree?
Absolutely. No, they have to be read exactly as stated.
So, if one of us makes a mistake, do we have to stutter over it?
No.
No, I think, I think for legal purposes, we would allow you to stutter over it.
I'll vote this out. I'll read this and then entertain the motion.
Sure.
That sounds good.
That sounds great.
That sounds good.
So, resolved, having convened in an open meeting on January 22nd, 2014, prior to the closing date, the School Committee of Auburn, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize a superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated January 21st, 2014, for the Bryn Mawr Elementary School located at 35 Swanson Road, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. For roofs and ventilation systems, which were used to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs, the Bryn Mawr Elementary School roof was installed in 1948 and has exceeded its useful life and requires replacement. The school's boiler was replaced in 2012, and all other related ventilation systems were installed in 1948, thereby requiring upgrades to the ventilation system to enhance efficiencies acquired with the boiler upgrade, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of the application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the school committee to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
I make the motion to accept that resolution.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Second is, resolved, having convened in an open meeting on January 22nd, 2014, prior to the closing date, the School Committee of Auburn, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize a superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated January 21st, 2014, for the Pakichog Elementary School located at 110 Pakichog Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. For heating and ventilation systems, to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs, one of the school's boilers was replaced in 2009, and the other boiler was installed in 1997. All other related ventilation systems were installed in 1961, thereby requiring replacement to the second boiler and upgrades to the ventilation systems to enhance efficiencies acquired with boiler upgrades, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the school committee to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Make a motion to accept that resolution.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The last one. That was a unanimous vote. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on January 22nd, 2014, prior to the closing date, the School Committee of Auburn, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize a superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated January 21st, 2014, for the Auburn Middle School located at 10 Swanson Road, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. For roofs, heating, and ventilation systems will be used to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs. The Auburn Middle School roof was installed in 1959 and has exceeded its useful life. One of the school's boilers was replaced in 2012, and the second boiler was installed in 1959. Along with the related ventilation systems that were installed in 1959, there are requiring upgrades to the second boiler and ventilation systems to enhance energy efficiencies, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or approval of an application, the awarding of any grant or other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the school committee to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Make a motion to accept that resolution.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a unanimous vote.
Important to note, too, this actually has the potential to save the town 50% of these costs, not to increase any costs. So I thank Mr. Gray, Mr. Fahey for putting this together. I think it has a great potential. So that we will share with the Board of Selectmen at their meeting on Monday. One, there are a couple of other items that are in your packet as well. In terms of to share with Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen next week, we looked at some estimated moving costs of what it's actually going to take, because in the summer of '15, assuming everything goes well, the Auburn Middle School materials and textbooks and whatnot that they have will go to the new middle school. Julia Bancroft in Pakichog will be moved to the current 10 Swanson Road facility, and Mary D. Stone will get transferred to the Pakichog School. So Mr. Fahey and Mr. Gray and Mrs. Moore have put together some anticipated charges. So for us to plan for, we don't need it, actually to plan for, for that summer's move, but then also the next page shows the expenses from JB and Mary D. in terms of utilities, basically, some repairs and maintenance, and what those costs we anticipate would be in, once that building actually is, those buildings are no longer in use.
Correct.
And if I may, if I can just address the difference between the two different costs. One is, Julie Bancroft is $12,000, and Mary D. Stone is $23,000. That's the difference between oil and gas. So that's the reason why those two numbers are out of whack.
Thank you very much.
Just one, two other quick ones. So the one that's got the green and red on it called Swanson Road conceptual budget, this is from the master plan team. This will be brought, it was initially shared with them, and we've got a January revised budget. Mr. Fahey's been working with Mr. Ringard, and you can see that's what gets us to the 1.8 total that ties back to what we have available for CIP funds. And then lastly, the document that just outlines or summarizes the work that'll be taking place this spring and summer. So Mr. Fahey's going to be tremendously busy, and Mr. Gray in helping get procurements ready, but...
And we're hoping you continue to bet $1,000.
Yes.
This was a tremendous amount of work. This is crazy. Thank you very much.
We're very fortunate.
Yeah. It was.
If I may, it's been a long time coming. We've been talking about this each year. I think probably for the last seven years, we keep holding off on our capital, and I know there's, a lot of issues come up, and we adjust the safety issues, we adjust the emergency needs, and we kind of reserve the fact as a capital, we don't want to put into the building where technically it's going to get decommissioned. So I think without that, without that vision, we wouldn't have this dollar amount here to renovate the existing middle school now. So I thank all of you. Well, Joe, for the record, you are the unsung hero behind the scenes. There's no two ways about it, and I can't say it enough. You are on top of these buildings, and I thank you.
Absolutely.
It's really easy to have you come in front of us and recommend something because we have a lot of faith in what you tell us, and every year it comes to fruition, and it's where we know that what you've told us is correct, and we thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Gray, once...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Through the chair, I just wanted to mention one more thing, which is that through all the side work with Dr. Brunel and Mr. Fahey, this should, this has identified all the CIP funds from 2007 forward, so they've all been identified, so that theoretically, if these all come to fruition, we will have used all the funds that were dedicated. I think there was some concern that we'd been sitting on funds for a while, so we did, we were very diligent in making sure that the town was generous enough to give us these funds for capital improvements, and we wanted to make sure they were totally utilized, and this will, if this comes to fruition for the spring and summer of 2014, we will have come up to date with our CIP funds.
Excellent. That's great news. Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing that out. Actually, we should have a motion on the CIP, the amendments to them. You can either do just the 15, or you can do the 15 through the 18, as noted here. That's up to you. Eventually, you'll need to do all of them, but we need to have at a minimum the 15 approved.
Someone make that motion?
I will if I find it. Where is it on the...
On page five, right below the table.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the recommended amendments, the FY 2015 CIP document, presented by Mr. Gray, Mr. Fahey, and Dr. Brunel. Is there something else we want to approve, too?
You could do CIP years, yeah, 15 through 18.
In addition, the CIP from 2015 through 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, actually, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks. Now we can move back to the superintendent's report.
Bye.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you again.
Some very exciting news came to us on the 20th of January. It was an email actually sent to Mrs. Lopez, principal of Julia Bancroft School, and as noted here, the U.S. Department of Education has what they call a Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence program, and Julia Bancroft has been invited to apply for this, and it's an honor to recognize the significant progress in closing the achievement gap. So the application actually is due in by March 21st. Dr. Lozay is working with Mrs. Lopez on that. And as we shared this today at the leadership team meeting, I think any time that one of our schools, one or more of our schools, or one or more of our students has a spotlight shown on the school or on an individual, it shines brightly on the whole Auburn School District. And as I noted here, there was a time, and I'm referring back to when I was a principal here, that the scores were fairly disparate between the schools, and it really is a credit to the entire leadership team in taking nothing away from Mrs. Lopez and her team, who deserve tremendous credit. It really is a tribute to, I believe, the collaborative work that happens among all of the administrators and the curriculum, and under Dr. Lozay's guidance, and Mr. Bouvier's guidance, and all of the work that everybody does jointly together. So I wanted to bring this to your attention. There's a fairly long process with this, but it's an honor that JB has been selected, and kudos to them and to, and to the whole team, I think, in general. So I wanted to just, we will keep you apprised of how that goes, but exciting news to get.
I love that book with stuff.
The next one was an article, Christine Robbins is one of our math teachers at Auburn Middle School, and this was an article that was published in the Pitsco Network. This has to do with their STEM Academy, and I wanted to bring recognition to Mrs. Robbins for writing this article, but also, again, I think it really shines a nice light on the STEM program, the STEM Academy, the STEM Summer Camp, the Young Engineers Club at Auburn Middle School, and that being under Mr. Gagnon's direction, and the whole team. You were all there that day when Governor Patrick visited and Secretary Malone, so it was quite a nice, quite a nice event. The, as we talk about the reconfiguration and the changes coming up in the schools, I just wanted to keep you apprised, there's ongoing work, not only in terms of our physical buildings and the spaces that our students will occupy, but also in terms of the merger that I had shared, I think, briefly previously. So we've had a couple of meetings with Dr. Lozay and myself and the intermediate principals. We had a joint meeting of the District 1 and 2 PTOs. We have another one coming up in a couple of weeks, I think, on the 4th. And we have a joint meeting of the two teams of schools coming together on February 11th. So I've had the opportunity to present an update regarding the middle school, most recently to the District 2 PTO, and shared with them about that. So there's a lot of excitement, but there's also questions, because we're bringing together groups of people, the least of which will have a problem is the children, because they are, they see each other on the soccer field and all of that, but there are traditions that we want to honor that each building has, and create some new ones, too. So good stuff happening around that. As Nicole reported earlier, the Beijing visitors will return to Auburn High School January 29th. There's a group of 16, and then again on February 3rd, there's a group of 39 students, and they're always heartily welcomed, and both groups of students get a tremendous amount out of it. So we look forward to welcoming them back again this, in a couple of weeks, actually. Oh, actually, when is next week? Time is flying. And at some future point, Mr. Hanfield and Mrs. Heidemann, who are the, she's really the impetus behind this, they'll share some information at an upcoming meeting. I did provide in the packet an update, the new ed-aval system, but we've, we've kept with this timeline anyway, a mid-year review, but I also wanted to draw your attention. I had referenced two documents and then forgot to include them. They're at your seat. One is labeled "Coaching and Evaluating Principals," and the other one, "Coaching and Evaluating Central Office Administrators." And these were documents, I modified them to fit Auburn's needs, but were ones that I received at the July Executive Institute, the superintendent one down in Mashpee. And just set a protocol, and I had shared this with the principals and central office administrators back in August, for when I make school visits and classroom visits with principals, the discussions that we have, and then also the work that I do with the, the central office administrators as well. So it is a tremendous amount of work. We spent more time today talking about it at leadership. Principals are in classrooms all the time. I'm in schools visiting and doing classroom visits with principals, and they're really, they're doing a tremendous job with it, administrators and teachers alike. So huge credit to all involved. Strategic plan, if you remember, on the 16th of November, we had about 125 people from across the community. It was a, really a fantastic day, called the World Cafe. And we're ready to take the next step. We're actually have been waiting to get scheduled in with the consultant Judith Enright, and she's going to be coming to the district on February 6th. So we're coordinating, pulling together this much smaller team to actually start to draft the plan. All members will have input. We're going to email it out, just as we promised that day. And we'll be representatives from all the different groups, administrative, school committee, parents, and community members. So if you're so inclined, we welcome the opportunity to have a school committee member. It's from 1:00 to 4:30 on February 6th, which is a couple of weeks from tomorrow.
Well, you know what? I'd be interested in doing that. If I can get some time over.
Entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion and put Lee in on the strategic planning committee.
Liz will second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And you know what? I just want to say, I was at the, at the strategic planning, and certainly would be interested in doing this. I just can't get out of work that day. So I, so I appreciate the fact that Lee is able to do it, because I think she'll work well.
Yeah.
That was well organized.
I missed the initial one because I was out of town.
It was very well organized.
So I'd really like to get involved, better involved.
It was a great event.
Yeah.
I couldn't make it because of a family issue, but I'll probably make it to this one.
Yeah.
And I'll just be there as a volunteer.
Once we draft something, we're going to send it out to all of the people who were invited to participate, so that way there's involvement along the whole process, too.
Okay.
The next item is the bus application. It's already time for us to get this sent out. We did, after a review with Mr. Gray and Mrs. Lynch, who coordinates this in the office, we did adjust the due date to June 1st. That will not impact us at all, but as we've done in the past, we will notify parents of this. We'll send a copy home. We'll add it to the agenda. The goal is always to have no late charges come in from individuals, and hopefully that will be the case this year.
Do you know how many we had late from last year?
I could get that number for you, but it's actually a staggering number. I want to say it's upwards of 200, but it...
Wow.
It's a staggering number of people.
It is staggering.
We did, yeah, yeah.
You don't have to get the number. I just wanted to, thereabouts, you know?
An awful lot.
It's amazing, because we announced it for weeks at our meeting.
And you do it all the time.
Right.
Now, what was the original due date before?
May 1st. It was one month earlier.
Okay, so here's another one now.
And, you know, we looked at our timelines, and this is not going to negatively impact us at all, and it will just give us that much more time to remind parents about it.
Here's the question. So do you, do you know, is, are the late fees primarily from elementary school students, middle school, high school? Does it matter?
I don't know. I'd have to look at the data with Mrs. Lynch. I don't believe so. I think it's pretty widespread across, across the levels.
It's just the family.
I feel, well, I feel like if it was primarily middle school, high school, that's, that's kind of a hard one to address, but elementary school, I mean, we're sending something home on a colored piece of paper.
Yep, yep. We include it in any email notifications going forward, and in fact, we'll include, we have one going out later this week, and we attach it. You know, it's posted on the website. There's one call notifications. It's a newsletter, so...
That's true, one call, yeah. So, yeah, I don't know what else we can do. Okay.
Yeah.
Just curious. Just curious.
Yeah, no, I, we've looked at that to see, but it doesn't seem, doesn't seem to be an easy answer. The next item is the, oh, yes, you do need to vote on that, I'm sorry, to approve it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the bus application pre-2014, 2015 school year as recommended by the superintendent and business manager.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, who is a vote?
Thank you for that reminder. The Southern Wester County Quarterly Report, you just approved the annual report from last year. It is here for your review and it does require that you accept it just having seen it.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, who is a vote?
So, we've shared with you the documents for the January twenty ninth meeting already. But just a quick update regarding the school building committee. We met on the ninth and we actually just met this past Friday night on the seventeenth. And we go back, we did receive approval from the zoning board, was actually just this past week, on the fifteenth, I believe. And conservation, that approval came in on the eighth. We go back to the planning board on January twenty eighth. And hopefully, with that approval in hand, we will be able to get a building permit and move forward with construction and the early site packages that are going out.
If I may, I was gonna, through the chair, I was gonna bring this up under new business, but since Dr. Vanel brought it up, I think I can ask the question here. So, explain to me, please, what's going on with the road and the planning board? And why, all of a sudden, they've decided that we need to do this and we need to foot the bill? And can you kind of summarize what's going on there?
Sure. As part of this process, in the multiple meetings that have taken place, there have been concerns that have been raised about having a sidewalk on West Street. There is one that's on the Sonic Circle. There have been concerns that have been raised through members of the town's administration regarding potential congestion here in a left turn lane. Through, as part of this, the whole MSBA process, each step of the way, different studies are required. And there was an engineering study on the traffic from NICH Engineering who did it. And it was their opinion that they believed, well, eventually, this may become an issue. It was not an immediate one. When it went before the planning board, and they had raised some concerns as well at their initial meeting, they raised the concerns as well that the town's administration had noted sidewalk issue, the widening of the road and potential congestion. So, then asked for what's called a peer review report. So, this next report, I believe it was the VHB report. They also conducted a traffic study. And that was shared with the planning board. And at our meeting that we went to on the seventh, I want to say, of January, they asked that we come back to them with something tangible that actually addresses what they see as potential concerns. So, we had meetings on the fourteenth of January and again, on the twenty first. And the SBC authorized an additional study by NICH to do some conceptual drawings and to come up with a ballpark estimate to conduct this. And at the meeting on the twenty first, all in attendance, town's administration and many of their department heads, as well as Mr. Gray, myself, Mr. Fahey, Mr. Imzy, and members of Skansker and OPM, Skansker and LPA, I should say, as well as NICH, all signed on that this should address the planning board's concern. The Friday night meeting of SBC was for them to endorse their support of getting these issues addressed. And they did endorse that unanimously.
So, I guess, it was, has this been part of the overall plan to begin with?
No.
This road piece?
No.
So, is this additional money now that we need to come up with?
So, what it entails is that, right now, is through each step of the process, there needs to be a review of the budget based on current figures. And it needs to be validated by three different groups. An outside group, Skansker, and then LPA as well, and now Fontaine's involved as the construction manager. Currently, right now, we're about one million dollars under budget. So, there will be funding available to take care of this within the project, presumably, assuming all continues to go well. The, the site packages, as they come in, hopefully, those will come in under budget as well. But no, this was not built into the project funding agreement originally.
So, is that, is that, does that make it an issue with the Massachusetts?
No, the School Building Authority.
School Building Authority?
It, it doesn't. They, they cap any site work to eight percent. And we were already over the eight percent. In fact, what has been explained to me is, and these are by individuals and firms that build buildings regularly.
Yeah.
It's near impossible to build a structure, a school, and cap it at an eight percent site cost. So, we're already over on that, anyway.
All right.
I would just like to say, just to Lee Ann's questions, is that this was brought up many, many times when the school buildings committee had this in front of them before the plans were even drawn, drawn up. And that's when they did the study. And the study, suppose he said, you know, it's all set. And then the school buildings committee had voted on it. And the thing was, it's always been a thorn in some of the committee's side for a long, long time. It was brought up many, many, many times, but then it was voted to accept it that way, the plans. But, and even to this day, I'm glad that they're coming with the money to address it because I think it's a need that needs to be addressed now, not later on when something happens down the road. I don't want to come see one of the children or something, get hit by a car or a truck or something like that because we held off on doing something that everybody knows is going to be a problem down the road.
Well, that's not what I'm saying. Well, I'm just, I'm just.
No, you're saying about the, wasn't in the plans.
Yeah, that this wasn't, you know, we had a study done and that study said, oh, no, everything's fine. And then the planning board decides, well, no, we don't accept that. We want somebody else to do it. And I'm just confused as to how this.
Well, I'm just saying, it was brought up well before even the plans were submitted, that, about this problem with the traffic.
I agree. If it's, if it's a safety issue and stuff, it needs to be addressed. I'm just concerned, I'm just baffled at stuff.
That it's happening, right.
Didn't get the rest of the initial.
So, you say the eight percent cap, that, so that means that anything over eight percent, we don't get any sort of reimbursement for it?
Correct.
So, I understand what Lee Ann's saying. First of all, I think she's, she's saying, and I agree, is if it needs to be addressed, it needs to be addressed. Our biggest concern is safety of kids.
Yep.
But, but the fact that it's being taken out of this budget, I, my concern is, what are we going to have to cut in order to have that done? So, I guess my question would be, when, when a building is built in town by some outside person, people or company, is it, is it often happened that they're responsible for putting in sidewalks or widening a road? Or does the town do that?
I actually asked that question and it, my understanding is it's common practice that when a firm comes in and does some major construction work, such as that on the corner of Route twenty and Prospect Street there, that there are, as part of the approval process, there is an order of conditions that in order to do that, you must do this. You must improve this area at a turning lane and such. So, my understanding is it's very much part of the process, especially in such a large-scale project as, as this.
Okay. So, as long as it's, everything is, everybody's being treated equally, that's good.
Yep, yep.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The school building master plan team, I did share a document with you. We were originally going to meet on the fourteenth of January, but with holidays, we were having some trouble getting in some estimates. So, our next meeting will be on the twenty fifth. And Mrs. Gibbrey, Mrs. Grivens, or I, would be have to report at that time. We did include for you the draft budget, the memo as well as the actual draft that was submitted. Mr. Gray personally delivered it to Town Hall on January thirteenth. So, this has been submitted and we're waiting, generally, it's a meeting for us to review that. But I did have communications with the town managers, I, we both regularly do, and Mr. Casanova. So, they will be in touch if they have any, any questions.
Thank you.
Through to her, if I may, just, I just want to make a comment. This is a great cover letter. I mean, it clearly, you know, it summarizes everything and it, I mean, they really shouldn't have any questions if they read this. So, thank you very much for putting the time to do that, I appreciate it.
Well, and I will give the credit, Mr. Gray actually started this, so it was a joint effort. But it really tried to emphasize the process that, as a committee, you went through in creating this budget.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Did you want me to talk about the MASIS Chapter Seventy?
Yes, if you want to, that may be in your report area?
I thought since it was fifteen, fifteen budget related.
Okay.
Oh.
It's up to you, wanting to share that now?
Even now or later, sure.
Okay.
Now's fine.
Oh, well, thank you, Mr. Jay. I, I just was, I guess, fortunate enough to have a two-hour webinar this afternoon with David Tobin from the Mass School Superintendent's Association. And the governor has released his preliminary Chapter Seventy funds for fiscal year fifteen. Before I tell you what the proposed increase will be, I'll just give you some of the highlights. It's not as massive as we were hoping. The, the issues that were brought before us were the fact that originally MASIS thought perhaps that inflation would be about a half a percent increase. And in fact, the state has determined it's eight tenths of a percent increase in inflation to the Chapter Seventy Foundation aid. They identified the fact that statewide, there were three thousand more students who were enrolled, which obviously reduces the available funds to the current students within all the districts. That low-income students have increased statewide and that, right now, the governor is proposing approximately a hundred million dollar increase statewide to Chapter Seventy funding, when in fact, MASIS was looking for somewhere between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and fifty million dollar increase. They did mention the fact that since this is the last term for the governor, that he may be presenting these numbers low, hoping that the legislators on both the Senate and the House side will identify the need for increased funding to local state aid. But the preliminary numbers from the governor's budget would increase our Chapter Seventy money by approximately two hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. And that obviously goes through a very vigorous and rigorous process between now and when everybody gets on the same page. But that was what was presented to us today.
I take that increase.
Yeah. It's not a decrease, it's good news.
Right.
Quarter million dollars.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Moving back to new business, QCC?
Auburn High School, we've been in discussions back and forth in terms of bringing forward some additional opportunities for our children in a variety of ways. Actually, Dr. Lozay and I will meet with the representative from Quinn-Sig tomorrow, Friday, actually, to discuss some more. But we do have an opportunity, a unique opportunity, for students in an AP English class at the high school to also enroll in English one oh one. The instructor actually teaches in, in both programs. And to be able to do this at a modest fee, I would say, to earn a three graduate, three undergraduate credits that students can earn and potentially transfer into a college of their choice. So, this opportunity actually would cost families two hundred and thirty-five to three hundred and fifteen dollars. But what I think is the most important opportunity in this is it will be an opportunity for students to engage in a hybrid learning environment, doing work online, doing work through Blackboard, and also participating during class discussions. Many colleges are utilizing these. And I actually think we've had some discussions internally regarding whether we should eventually to say that every student before leaving high school must take an online course just because it seems to be a wave of the future and give them opportunity while we're here to guide and guide them through that process. So, we see this, excuse me, as an opportunity. We'd offer it to parents. If it does not get enrolled, we would not offer it. But we did do some dipsticking of students to learn, you know, might you have interest in something like this? And we believe there could be, but it would require your approval because in essence, would be altering the program of studies that you approve each year because this would be in addition to what we currently offer.
I'd entertain a motion and then for discussion purposes, because I know I have a question.
I'll make a motion to support a pilot program with Quinn-Sigam and Community College in offering a three-credit undergraduate English course to AP English students at Auburn High School.
Second. Discussion. Anyone have a question? I guess I can get the ball rolling. Are there other schools that are participating in this program?
This particular one, no, not with Auburn. But there are a number of other schools who have relationships with Quinn-Sig or other colleges and regularly do this.
Who, whose idea, who came up with the idea to?
This was actually, it originated from Mrs. Cormier, who is the instructor. I was at the high school, she was talking to me about it one day. And then folded in Mr. Handfield and Dr. Lozay. So, it's been something that we're trying to work on. And because it's rather unique, it's taken some negotiation and back and forth with, with the college, but.
And so, basically, just because I read the packet before this and this evening, but, so basically, so people at home know, for basically two hundred and thirty-five to three hundred and fifteen dollars, they would get a three-credit college English course.
Correct, correct.
Wow, that's, yes.
Okay, so, you stated that it was a three-credit course, a three-credit for an undergraduate, for a school of their choice. But I've got to, I've got to believe that not every college is going to, is going to accept those credits.
And we did, in the preliminary letter, to let parents, and once, if you approve this, the plan is to hold apparent information because there is no guarantee for any college to necessarily accept credits from any sending college. But certainly, the ones in the general vicinity, in the Wester area, have a consortium agreement to accept them. But you're right, there is no, absolutely no must that they have to accept it. Similarly, with the AP courses, when students earn qualifying scores of three, four, or five, many colleges will accept those, but not all of them do. You know, so it's really more, I think, the experience that, that we're proposing being offered.
And it'd be an educational piece to the parents so they would understand.
Right, oh, yes, yes, yeah.
And so, if I can.
Yes.
So, what is the, what is the plan for a student who can't afford the?
During the class, they'll be taking their AP English course right throughout. This is actually going to be in addition to that. It's going to be a lot of online work. So, they're not going to be negatively impacted, they just won't get the graduate credits. We don't have a pool of funds to support students who aren't. It really is an opportunity, if there's funding available. And we actually spoke about that, the four of us, and grappled with. But we're still providing a solid AP program for the students. They won't have the opportunity to earn the three credits beyond that, though.
So, nothing in that, nothing in the AP class itself is going to require that these students will have done this online?
Oh, no, no, because there is a.
There's no advantage in the AP class to have taken this class, to have enrolled in this program?
Oh, no, I think, I mean, they're really going to be looking in parallel tracks. So, there's a very prescribed curriculum that needs to be utilized for the AP English. For example, when we talked about this, you know, one portion of that may all be about memoirs. The English one oh one class also can utilize that. They're just going to be doing some additional work at night, mainly on the Blackboard and some online discussions and some additional assignments for that.
But they are completely two separate courses.
They're going to, whatever possible. Oh, yes, they'll be graded, so they'll be, they'll get a Quinn-Sigam grade and an English high school grade, absolutely. Yeah, they have to.
I guess my concern is for the student who's taking the AP class and they're not taking the course through Quinn-Sig, that they somehow have a disadvantage in the AP class at Auburn High. And that's not fair, so.
And that was one of the questions that we asked and even kind of followed up with today in a quick conference call, just to be sure. So, and hearing it directly from the instructor, of Mr. Handfield and Dr. Lozay were there, there will be absolutely no one, we wouldn't have even brought this forward if we believed it would disadvantage a student who's in AP, who may either choose not to or may not be able to afford to participate in that undergraduate course. And I've been assured that, no, there will not be a negative impact.
I have to tell you, I, I have a hard time because I feel like no student should be, we shouldn't assume that people can't afford to do this or they wouldn't be able to find that. But we all know that there are some people who can't.
Sure.
But then do you punish the people who can't afford it? It's really hard.
Right.
It's a hard one, I have to say.
It is.
I wish there was some way that we could make sure that every student who wanted to could do it, and I understand that that's not necessarily realistic.
Well, we did, you know, talk about this, and our thinking was, you know, if we looked at this as intended as a pilot program, and if we really see that at the end, when we assess it, that it really is something that we want to make sure that no student who can't afford it can miss, then I think we need to look at that budgetarily, you know, to see, is there a way for us to do that if a student qualifies by whatever measure free or reduced lunch? You know, that would be the ultimate goal, to never say that a student, just like on field trips, that they can't, I mean, there are some that we say, if you can't pay, you can't attend, but we really try to limit those whenever possible.
I'd like to make sure that this is, you know, that whether I'm year after this year or whatever, I really would like that discussion to continue for, you know, years to come, that if we can try to find the money to do that, because it's, that really breaks my heart, actually, to be quite honest.
I agree with yours. I can't.
Maybe the good thing is to try to get as many kids involved as possible, because it looks like the more you have, the less.
It will reduce it, yes.
The less of the cost.
Correct, yep.
So, maybe if we could market this some way that we can get a lot involved.
Yeah.
That could reduce the.
My comment will be, no, I support it because I really think it's an opportunity for our kids to be participating at a college level, and, you know, we can discuss it, you know, funding sources down the road, but I think this is a great opportunity. It's, to me, it's more along the lines of a pilot program at this point, and we can evaluate moving forward. I agree with Liz to continue the discussions, to bring up, you know, making sure what we can do to make sure we don't leave our kids behind.
Agreed.
So, unless there's any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Not this, not this, that.
So, three, yes, and Wayne, no.
Thank you.
And move on to preschool tuition?
As we do annually, we looked at the preschool tuition as well as the before and after-school tuition programs, and it is our recommendation at this time that all of the rates remain the same. So, we will need a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to maintain the government integrated preschool rates for the 2014, 2015 school year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's a vote.
I might as well just do the second one.
Oh.
Do you want me to just do it?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to maintain the current tuition rates for the before and after-school programs in 2014, 2015 school year.
Second, again.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Here's a vote.
Through the chair, I would just like to congratulate and commend Dr. Bono and Mr. Gray and the leadership team for being able to maintain those fees.
I agree.
It's good news.
It is, thank you. This, I just wanted to make you aware of, I included in the packet a notification that came from the Department of Ed. The GED, which is the General Equivalency, Equivalent, General Education Development, the, basically, the equivalency exam that students take who may not finish high school, is being changed now, and I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing it correctly, to the HICENT. And the GED is no longer offered as of December 31st, so I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you.
And then in terms of upcoming events, we've got the half-day that's coming up on Tuesday, and then our joint meeting with the Board of Selectment and Finance Committee on Wednesday. But then, starting late next week and into the following week, the Quabbin Valley Festival, they have rehearsals for that. It's typically been held at Palmer High School. I've gone out to it before with my husband to see. It's quite an event. Our students participate with many other schools in the Quabbin Valley, and it's really nice, so I wish our students, students well in that.
Does anyone else have anything on the new business? Because I would like to mention one thing, that upcoming, very soon, I believe it's February 1st, we have one of our committee members, Mr. Scobie, and Ralph Capaldi, who was that chair on the vote, yes, will be participating in the Dancing with the Stars. So, anyone that's watching, if there are still tickets left, hopefully we'll see you there, rooting our contestants on.
And I will tell you.
And this is to benefit Auburn Youth and Family Services.
Exactly. And actually, we'll be including in our email notification on Friday that on January 31st, the night before, they do a dress rehearsal right at the dance studio, and it's going out to students, because we've got three staff members plus Mr. Scobie who are dancing. So, I would imagine, because on the first, it's an adult-only event, so I'll actually be going on the 31st with the students to see their teachers, so it'll be very nice.
So, what staff room event?
We have Mr. Jeff Burke from the high school, we have Mr. Matt Watson from the middle school, and we have Mrs. Kim Norris from Packer Chuck School. I believe those are the three, and then Mr. Scobie from School Committee, so all of the names are listed down, and then Mr. Capaldi, who was very involved with, there's a.
Mr. Handfield's brother.
Oh, Mr. Handfield's brother. Corey Handfield will be participating, is a football coach.
Adam LaFlash.
Adam LaFlash. Who else did I see from the town?
Adam Bernie.
I think Adam Bernie might be, yeah.
Oh, yes, he is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's quite a group. So, that'll come out in an email on Friday, the listing of all of them.
And I will say, I've been to it before, it's a great event. We picked up our tickets today, and it's, because of our local access cable, it's the gift that keeps giving, so.
But they do, you know, Auburn Youth and Family Services does so much for our schools.
They do.
They're fantastic.
It's great that our, that we have so many people from schools.
It is. It's a tremendous event.
It is. For a great charity.
It is.
Not only just for the schools, but for families in general.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yes.
Fantastic.
Even with Liz and her husband there, they do their coats and stuff, and it's a big thing. It helps and.
Yep.
Makes a difference.
It's a good thing, they all do.
Wonderful organization.
So, sorry that took so long.
No, that's great.
Move on to the business and financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we'll go right to transfers. You'll see before you back-to-back copies of transfers. The first ones, our budget transfers, your information, did not require your approval. Once again, these are adjustments we made during mid-year to bring things into either actual spending or to shift some savings to reduce school choice account. I'm sure, as you recall from the past, one of the things we do at this time of the year is to start to look at ways that we can reappropriate some of our funds that have depleted some of our revolving accounts, and as we continue to do so, we want to make sure that we have sufficient funds in those accounts to address any future unanticipated needs as they may occur. So, the first page is for your information only. I don't know if anybody has any questions. If not, on the back page is a request from transfers that do require your approval. These are funds, once again, that have been identified, that are currently additional funds that remain in our accounts that we wish to shift to non-public transportation so that we eventually can reduce the cost of the circuit breaker account. As recall, that's a fund that is set aside for unanticipated special education needs, and whenever we get a chance in order to replenish that count, we try to do so, so I would ask your approval for this transfer.
Make a motion to approve the transfers that were requested by the business managers?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's a vote.
The next document that you have is just a preliminary review of what we've used for oil at our schools, as well as our natural gas usage. As you can see, this particular report indicates, at least from an oil standpoint, we've used very little, as far as deliveries are concerned, because we've used what's in the tank. I would expect that the next update, due to the current temperatures, you may see a much different presentation. Likewise, the natural gas usage. You can see that we have made some inroads into depleting those budgets, but at this point in time, we feel confident that unless this continues into July, we should have sufficient funds to meet the natural gas needs of the district. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Move on to personnel.
As we regularly do, we look to bring forward job descriptions, and with Mrs. Turkot's pending retirement, Mr. Gray met and discussed the current job responsibilities as well as future ones. So, what we're proposing is two new job descriptions, one for each of the members of the business office outside of Mr. Gray. And it is our recommendation that you approve these, and that our intention would be to get the positions posted. One individual already serves as the accounts payable, well, this would be just a name change only, but the payroll and business assistant would be the posting, and we'd like to do that as soon as possible to get someone in the position for training purposes.
Make a motion to approve the new job descriptions that were requested by the business administration.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, here's a vote. And we do have to go into executive session, and before we take that motion, I just want to say thank you for spending the entire night with us to see the representative.
Did you learn a lot? Yeah.
So, thank you very much. I know it's a long day for you.
Thanks, Nicole.
And now, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session, and then a roll call vote.
Make a motion to go into executive session for MGL Chapter 30, Section 21A, two, to discuss strategy with regards to negotiations with union and non-union personnel.
Roll call.
Let me, second first.
Second. Sorry, Elaine.
Mrs. Grivens?
Yes, Mrs. Gibbrey.
Yes, Mr. Page.
Yes.
Mr. Laurie.
Yes. Good night, everyone.